Good evening colleagues, please be seated. I'd like to welcome everyone to this first business meeting of the Newcastle City Council of the 2019-2020 municipal year. Can I firstly remind everyone that standalone microphones will again be used at this meeting and for all future meetings. Can I ask then that members move to their microphones at the appropriate time and I'll try to remember to call you. Please do not speak from your seats as you are unlikely to be heard. As members are also aware, tonight we'll be starting to use the new electronic voting system for all votes, so please ensure that you are logged into the GoVote system so that all members are ready to vote this evening. There are, as you are aware, a number of staff from the digital team in the chamber, please raise your hand at any time if you need any help. So if we can move on to apologies, do we have any apologies?
Thank you Lord Mayor, we've had apologies from councillors Ahad, Ali, Alan, Allison, Dunn, Donaldson, Ellis, Ferguson, Hindmarsh, Huddart, Keating, McGinnis, Sharon Patterson, Hazel Stevenson, Margaret Wood, David Wood and Wright.
Thank you, any further? Karen Robinson. Okay, if we can move on to the minutes of the previous meetings, does council agree the minutes of the meeting held on the 3rd of April 2019 with the addition of councillor Sharon Patterson's apologies? Agreed? And does council agree the minutes of the special meeting and annual meeting held on the 22nd of May 2019? Councillor Taylor. Okay, thanks for that, we'll make sure you're added, councillor Patterson. Right, okay, we'll get that sorted as well. Anything further on the minutes? Okay, if we move on to announcements, on behalf of council I would like to congratulate all those with a North East connection who've been recognised in the birthday honours list. And I'd now like to formally welcome two new councillors who could not be present at the annual meeting in May. Can I ask councillor Sylvia Copley of West Fenham and councillor Sandra Davison of Chapel to stand please? So we know who you are. Thank you. There are a number of items of correspondence this month, so does council agree to receive the correspondence firstly the parliamentary undersecretary of state for exiting the European Union? Agreed? And from the Minister for Family Support Housing and Child Maintenance? Agreed. Thirdly, the parliamentary undersecretary of state for Public Health and Primary Care? Agreed. And finally, the European professional club rugby? Agreed. Thank you for that. There are no petitions received this month, so if we can move on to public questions and address, there are two questions which have been received this evening. So firstly, if I can now call on Rachel Schwartner Bonn to address and put questions to the council.
Thank you. To Newcastle City Council, on April 3rd 2019, Newcastle City Council declared a climate emergency and committed to becoming carbon neutral by 2030. Our question is this: can Newcastle City Council commit to accountability to residents and to environmentally sustainable, environmentally responsible investments recognising that mining is fundamentally incompatible with the climate emergency? In relation to accountability, will the council produce an interim public report every three months with updates on progress and a yearly public report with timeline of plans and targets and levels of current emissions? Two, will the council convene the Climate Change Convention announced in April within three months, along with a citizens' assembly inviting residents and groups such as Extinction Rebellion to play an active role? Three, will the council state that mining in Newcastle is fundamentally incompatible with the council's climate emergency commitments? Four, will the council commit to reviewing their investment strategy and due diligence processes to ensure compatibility with the climate emergency? Will the council refuse all future investment from companies that fund and profit from the mining industry? As you know, in order to be climate neutral, development in Newcastle needs to be sustainable. The National Planning Policy Framework states that planning for sustainable development should have an environmental objective to contribute to protecting and enhancing our natural, built and historic environment, including making effective use of land, helping to improve biodiversity, using natural resources prudently, minimising waste and pollution and mitigating and adapting to climate change, including moving to a low-carbon economy. Mining and investment from companies that profit from multinational mining firms can in no way bring development to Newcastle that is sustainable for our city and humanity. In relation to mining in Newcastle, we can put some numbers on our concerns. If 800,000 tonnes of coal was extracted from Newcastle, it would emit roughly 2,075,638 tonnes of carbon dioxide. This would be a violation of the spirit of carbon neutrality whether or not the figures appeared on the official balance sheet, no matter where the coal was burned, who burned it or what they used it for. In relation to socially and environmentally responsible investment, an investment company that has invested tens of millions into a major city centre development in Newcastle and wants to invest hundreds of millions more is one of the major shareholders behind a multinational mining firm which is not interested in the protection of the environment or people. This firm is responsible for Brazil's worst ever environmental disaster when a dam-to-hold tailings waste collapsed in November 2015. Its copper mine in Antima, Peru, has covered the area in a dust cloud. Nearby communities have toxic metals, lead, cadmium and arsenic, in their blood and urine. The investment company that is investing in Newcastle has profited off these murderous operations in Latin America. We cannot allow investment and growth in the business district of Newcastle to be at the expense of communities across Latin America. There are investment opportunities that are compatible with human health and with the environment and Newcastle Council needs to seek out those opportunities. In relation to accountability, a citizens' assembly brings people together to learn, deliberate and make recommendations on an issue of public concern. Similar to jury duty, members are randomly selected from the population by a process called sortition. Quotas are used to ensure that the assembly is representative in terms of key characteristics such as gender, age, ethnicity, education level and geography. Assembly members learn about critical thinking before they hear balanced information from experts and stakeholders. The members spend time deliberating in small facilitated groups and then they draft and vote on recommendations. Citizens' assemblies are conducted by non-partisan organisations under independent oversight. They are transparent, inclusive and effective. We look forward to the council's answer on how they will provide accountability to residents and environmentally responsible investments in light of the climate emergency.
Thank you very much. I now call on Cabinet member councillor Kemp to respond.
Thank you Lord Mayor. Thank you Rachel for bringing this hugely important question to City Council. It is a global issue with real relevance for all citizens and there is a need and urgency for us as a city to address these challenges. Here in the North East, we were the home of the Industrial Revolution with significant historically and economically important inventions created here and evolved here and we have much to be proud of and celebrate, but this has also left unintended consequences. So I believe it is important that as a city we look to take ownership and responsibility in how we go about dealing with these immense challenges. Taking up the Green Revolution and playing our role in ensuring that we provide an environment that is clean, green and sustainable will be key to safeguarding the city for future generations of Newcastle citizens. I would like to give a very simple statement of reassurance by saying that this Labour administration is committed to openness, transparency and is very clear about our accountability. I believe that as a city council we have a leadership role and the actions we take and the decisions we make inform others. This can clearly be seen. I am proud that Newcastle University has declared a climate change emergency and even better news for the city is that Newcastle Hospitals Trust has just declared a climate change emergency too, the first health trust in the country, so Newcastle is definitely taking a leading role. With regard to the specific four questions you raise in your presentation, I shall attempt to address each one now. As you know, I committed this city council to a climate change convention and this is the vehicle which will provide continuous accountability as the commission will belong to the city and not the city council. I think that in the same way as when I introduced the Waste Commission, the thinking was that these key issues and challenges are those that belong to whole society, not simply the city council. This is not ignoring the responsibilities that we have, those statutory duties and also significant policy decisions, but that overall changes societal. We are currently reviewing the structure, terms of reference etcetera of the convention, but I am clear that there is a real need for this body to be open, accountable and transparent and we will report to City Council to overview and scrutiny and I suggest the outward facing, providing updates and reports on a regular basis and I will commit to that. In direct response to your second question, yes, we will be established in three months. I would like to see the first meeting of the convention in September. So hopefully that will give you the indication of progress that we have and it will allow us to put into place all of the necessary governance and policy pieces. That convention with your involvement is going to be the natural forum for us to address the issues we raise. The whole point of this is that we come together to agree the answers and the questions. On questions three and four and the type of investments we see in our city, the issue for Newcastle is what type of economy we want to have as a city and as a nation. We've set out our economic priorities for the city, for example in renewable energy technologies, digital and data and this will be where we will put council resources and support. The question of what we look for investment in the city is an extremely interesting point and one I believe that should or could be of real interest to the convention, as there will inevitably be significant detail needed to be understood about what investments exist, what the alternative investments could be and what might be lost or gained by those decisions. As a council, we do not have control over all of the business activity happening in the city, so we call on government to put in place the national policy framework needed to ensure that business activity is compatible with climate goals i.e. proper carbon pricing, regulation on energy intensive industries and incentives for change. Our role in the city will be to focus on how we can support the green economy rather than help lead by example. With regard to the proposing of a people's assembly, as I've stated earlier, we are currently working on the convention and the associated activities with the understanding of how the governance will work. My mind is very open, I think we have an open door policy about this. I'm very happy to share with parties interested in the structures and involvement in this citywide, nationwide, global wide issue. So the importance for me is transparency, openness and accountability. I hope that I've been able to give you sufficient reassurance on the four key questions you've addressed and I welcome your participation with many others in the convention.
Thank you very much.
You have a minute to respond, Ms Schwartner Bonn.
Thank you for your answer, it was really good to hear. I've asked our question in line with Extinction Rebellion's second demand, which is that we can halt biodiversity loss and reduce greenhouse gas emissions to net zero by 2025. And I'm really glad to hear that Newcastle City Council and that you in particular understand the importance of the climate emergency and that you're committing to accountability and transparency. I'm really excited to see what's going to happen with this commission as you develop it and I'm really excited to hear that you're looking for renewable investments and ways that Newcastle can move on from a historical legacy into a green future. That said, when it comes to things like open cast coal mining, these are issues that are being decided right now not by the mining community, not by investments and business community, but by City Council and so we're going to be watching that as part of Extinction Rebellion.
And can I now invite Timar Pittman to address and put the second question to council, please.
Thank you and good evening. On April 3rd, Newcastle City Council declared a climate emergency following the petition started by a Green Party member and in response to a motion put forward by the Liberal Democrats Wendy Taylor. I note that the City Council have updated their website to reflect their new commitments, although their climate change mitigation strategy and climate action plan have yet to be updated, which is what the petition had called for. Of course, it takes time to implement change, however, the need for urgent action is critical bearing in mind the IPCC's warning that global warming must be capped to a maximum of 1.5 degrees C by 2030 or else we face massive habitat and species loss and considerably enhanced threats of more frequent and more severe natural disasters. The climate emergency asked for more than simply declaring a climate emergency, specifically it demanded of the City Council to publicly report on progress regarding the 2010 declaration on climate change, the climate action plan and the 2014 mayor's adapt commitments within six months, as well as updating its climate action plan within six months. The petition also demanded a shift to climate neutrality rather than carbon neutrality as this encompasses non-carbon greenhouse gases such as water vapour, nitrous oxides and ozone. These demands are necessary if the City Council is to achieve its ambition to make Newcastle carbon neutral by 2030, there simply isn't time left for failure, there is no contingency. If progress towards carbon neutrality isn't measured, how will the citizens of Newcastle know that progress is being made? Climate change affects us all and we need to know our futures are being taken seriously. We can see from the growing youth strike movement that young people are seriously concerned about their futures. Without progress updates and evidence of tangible commitments to achieve carbon neutrality, one could surmise that the climate emergency is little more than hot air. According to the City Council's current climate change mitigation strategy, without any local action, carbon emissions in the city by 2030 will be 1,254 kilotons of CO2. The report hoped to achieve a 50% reduction in carbon in line with its 2005 baseline, with a range of measures and factors leading to this reduction. Of note are the mode shift from car to bike walking for circa 5,000 people and this would lead to a reduction of 1.5 kilotons of CO2. Also of note is the renewable energy at domestic scale support for PV or photovoltaics, which would lead to carbon saving of 19.1 kilotons of CO2. Newcastle upon Tyne has a population of over 300,000 people. If the aforementioned mode shift was increased from 5,000 to 50,000 people, 15 kilotons of CO2 could be saved. If half of the population moved to sustainable modes of transport, 45 kilotons of CO2 could be saved. The City Council recognises that motor transport also significantly impacts on air quality and it has an obligation to make significant improvements. Indeed, it recently proposed either a clean air zone or low emission zone could provide the solution. The most appropriate solution though would be simply to ban all private motor vehicles on the city centre, other than goods vehicles, taxis, buses, electric vehicles and those of disabled badge holders. The modal shift in transport would be obligatory, so not only would air quality radically improve, so would carbon emissions and the rich could not simply buy their way out. Clearly, it's a big step to take, so a transition to this could be achieved by trialling just one day per week as a no car day. Edinburgh recently began such a trial whereby cars are prohibited from its city centres on Sundays. To support business, the money spent on subsidising the Alive After Five scheme could be spent instead to bring people into the city centre by public transport instead. Now, the climate change mitigation strategy also notes there'll be an increase in population and the city's local plan is set to deliver new housing. If the City Council implemented a modified Merton rule whereby all new houses installed standard 4 KWP, kilowatt peak, solar photovoltaic panels, an impressive 24 kilotons of CO2 could be saved every year. By mandating that developers install solar PV as standard, the city would make significant carbon savings at no financial cost to the city centre. Typically, such PV systems would cost the developer around £7,000 to install, but this cost could be passed on to home buyers as a break even point is just 10 years. So in addition to inquiring what progress has been made towards reducing carbon emissions since declaring a climate emergency, I'd like to ask whether the City Council will consider introducing mandatory solar PV installations on all new housing, as well as introducing a car-free city centre trial ahead of a potential move to making the city centre car free? And if such matters are to be decided by the Promos Climate Change Convention, I'd like to know what powers that convention will have. Thank you.
Thank you Ms Pittman, I now call on Cabinet member councillor Kemp again to respond please.
Hello again Ms Pittman. Thank you for bringing this presentation to the City Council, a hugely important issue, not simply for this local authority but for the city and for society. For the record, this City Council declared a climate change emergency not in response to either a petition from a Green Party member nor a motion from the opposition party, but as part of a global movement in response led very significantly by an actively engaged global youth movement and also by public attention being clearly raised and focused through programmes such as the Blue Planet. The timing was simply due to the meeting calendar of City Council, as I felt it important that such a significantly important decision for the City Council and the city should be announced through this forum. Now, the reason I make this point is simply to be clear that this is a challenge and an issue of fundamental and significant importance for us all. This is not tribal nor party political, we all have a role to play. Within your presentation, I'm pleased that you acknowledge that the City Council has updated our website reflecting our commitments and note your request for updated our website reflecting our commitments and note your request for further information, which will be forthcoming. We are making progress on the Climate Change Mitigation Strategy to 2030 and the Supporting Action Plan, but as I'm sure you'll appreciate, there is a significant amount of work to be undertaken. It is in development, and I intend to have these documents ready ahead of the Climate Change Convention in September. Progress on our mitigation strategy will also come to council on a regular basis, and I'm sure the scrutiny committees will want to play their role in this too. Your presentation is detailed and informative in illustrating the scale of the challenge we face, and I thank you for this. I am under no illusion as to the societal changes needed to work for our future. You make a bold suggestion for clean air in a city that deserves to be part of this debate, and yes, we are aware of the measures to ban cars in the city centre being trialled in places such as Edinburgh. As you be aware, we are currently considering the many thousands of responses to the Clean Air consultation, and later on this year, we will be announcing the measures to follow from that. But while we consider that, you're right to push us for bold action, and I will discuss with my colleague councillor Arlene Ainsley, Cabinet Member for Transport, the possibility of making Newcastle City Centre car-free for International Car-Free Day as a way of testing its impact. At the same time, we are working through the details of the Climate Change Convention, governance, and how to ensure that it is effective, open, transparent, and inclusive. I truly hope that you and all the other interested parties will come together with us to work as a city to identify solutions, help continue to raise this agenda across the whole city, and ensure that we who are currently in roles of responsibilities as custodians of this great city do everything we can to ensure a great city for future generations. The benefits of coming together to tackle climate change go beyond the city limits. In so many ways, our ability to act needs national change. In just one example, when you call for requirement for solar panels on all new homes built, it is so obviously a good idea people would question why not, but we need government support. Our core strategy, the document that underpins any planning permission we grant, requires all developments to address the impacts of climate change. This includes optimising the use of locally renewable or low-carbon energy solutions. The council is currently developing guidance to support this policy. The guidance will cover a range of measures that should be used to address carbon reduction. Solar panels are only one tool available, and the guidance will seek to ensure that the most appropriate measures are used to secure carbon reduction. But the powers we have to force a home to be built to certain criteria are directly linked by law, and the developers know this. So I do think, again, there is an opportunity through the convention to put pressure and lobby to the developer and community. So while we continue to push for changes within our city, the real change has to come from Newcastle putting pressure on government to follow our lead and match our ambitions, and I truly hope that one of the outcomes is work of that nature through the convention.
Thank you councillor Kemp.
You have one minute to respond, Ms Pittman.
Thank you. I'm pleased at the progress that's been taken so far in establishing the climate convention. It's a really positive step, and it shows the city council's willing to work in new ways and is mindful of its new commitments to carbon neutrality. And I'm also really pleased to hear that you'll consider further the idea of a car-free trial in the city centre ahead of perhaps something more. With regard to the modified Merton Rule, I understand that this has been implemented around the country elsewhere, so I think potentially the government support is there, but perhaps, as you say, this is something that can be explored further at the climate convention. Thank you.
Okay, if we can move on to item seven. Professor Eugene Milne, the Director of Public Health, is here to present the annual report for 2018, and invite Professor Milne to present the report.
Thank you very much.
Perhaps if we can just wait a couple of minutes, sort of, if the public are leaving the public gallery.
I always have this effect on audiences.
They're being quite quiet, so.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, members of council. It's an honour to present my fifth report as Director of Public Health for Newcastle. Can I start by making a slight apology? There are one or two formatting errors in the document that's come out in the papers. We'll make sure that those are corrected for a version which is published on the website It's a particular pleasure to be presenting this with this Lord Mayor in the chair, who may not remember, but back in 1981, he taught me some biochemistry at the Special Assay Service Laboratory at the RVI, which made me think I look back at an indicator or two of health at that time in the city, and the one that really stood out for me is that if you look at infant mortality in Newcastle back in 1981, the rate was 12 deaths below the age of a year per thousand live births. In the statistics which I present to you today, it's 2.9 per thousand. It's a 75% fall over that time. It's a spectacular change. Over that time, we've also seen an increase in life expectancy for men and women, which has been nothing short of spectacular. For much of the time, it's been rising by as much as four or five hours a day. Now, that's one of those statistics that I always have to repeat to myself because it sounds unrealistic when you say it, but it's true. It's on the back of that that I think that I've focused this report on thinking about why it is that we've seen a slowing of life expectancy at national, regional, and local level in the last few years, and for women in Newcastle, we've seen some reversal of life expectancy during that time, as I've described in the report. Now, the scale of that change, you'll have read in the national press, at times has been claimed to be extremely large. The Institute for Public Policy Research recently claimed that as many as 130,000 people had died in excess of expected figures since 2010 as a consequence of austerity. Those figures are overblown. There is no way on the method that they describe that you can arrive at those sorts of statistics. However, there is an effect, and in order to try and put it into context for the city, I've tried to break that down in such a way that it gives a feel for what it is that we might be looking for in those data. And I would suggest that if there is an impact with that slowing of life expectancy, which you'll see illustrated in some of the graphs in the report, it's probably of the order of about a death per week in the city. Now, there is also, underlying that, although that's a terrible thing, there's also an enormous division between our experience of life expectancy and mortality in the North East and that that we see in the South East of the country and elsewhere in more affluent areas, and that there we've seen very little change over time in terms of the division, despite the increase that we've seen overall in life expectancy and reduction of mortality. I've included in the report some decomposition of the causes of change in life expectancy over that time from my colleagues at Public Health England, that I find extremely interesting. You'll see that I've given breakdowns both in terms of the ages at which changes have taken place, and in terms of causes recorded on death certificates for those changes. And the things that really stand out from that are that we see particularly for men that there has been a reversal in early-middle age, and it appears to be related pretty closely to substances and to mental health-related issues. I don't think that's any great surprise to us. Those of you who follow the statistics know what we've seen in terms of drug-related deaths in the city and elsewhere will know that that makes sense. But also in there, what we've seen is for older women, a fall in life expectancy which may well be related to what looks like an increase in the use of diagnoses of dementia on death certificates. Now, some of that is a change in recording habit by doctors, but I don't think all of it is. I think if we were going to see vulnerable groups in our society who were affected by austerity, then I think that those two that I've just described would be at the forefront. They would be the canaries in the coal mine that we would see. There are also effects in there that I think need explaining and that I can't explain at the moment. There is a slowing of the improvement that we've seen in cardiovascular disease mortality in the last few years, and I don't know why that is, particularly because we've seen, certainly at a local level, some major progress in some of the antecedents. Most notably, and I would draw your attention to this in relation to tobacco, since 2013, when public health moved to the local authorities, the prevalence of smoking in Newcastle has fallen from 24.9% to 15.2%. That is an extraordinary change, and I think bodes very well for what we may then see subsequently in the health of the population. But what I'd also say is that looking at deaths is only the tip of the iceberg, and actually what I've tried to do with a graphic on page 16 of the report is use the Global Burden of Disease Study to illustrate why focusing too much on deaths really distracts from the things that we need to be doing and that are available to councils in terms of improving public health. At the level of deaths, we see that cardiovascular disease and cancers dominate, and these feature very large in the NHS plan, long-term NHS plan. But as you drill down through disability-adjusted life years to years lived with disability, the things that actually dominate there are mental health problems, musculoskeletal disorders, sensory impairments. These are things that stop people from participating, stop them from being able to adopt the behaviours that ultimately are those that lead to those causes of mortality. And I would suggest that the things that we need to focus on within the council and within the city are those that allow people to participate, to be properly engaged, and in order to avoid getting to the point where they have those risk factors. And towards the end of the report, what I've tried to do is draw out some of the recent evidence relating to adverse childhood experiences and resilience, the way that those feed through into factors like substance abuse and mental health problems, and the way that we're increasingly seeing infrastructure as a means to health improvement. These, I think, are the things that are available to us, and I think an increasingly strong case is being developed within the literature for what we're able to do through the powers available to local authorities to improve health in these ways. Within the report, what I've done is focused on describing the health of the city at this stage, and we haven't talked about what we're trying to do in response to that. We proposed to bring that back, both in the Cabinet portfolio holder's report subsequently, and I would like actually this year to produce a public health report more broadly for our department along the lines that has recently been done in South Tyneside, for those who are interested to get a feel for the breadth of what is going on within the public health I think I'd probably stop at that point and take questions, but I hope that what I've tried to do in the report is give a clear indication of what some of the things you might be reading in the national press about austerity might mean, what they might look like at a local level, and what the focus is that we probably need to be emphasising within the city in order to try and improve health and avoid those outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Milne. I'm pleased to hear you learnt some biochemistry. A little. Professor Milne has indicated that he would like to take questions in sets of three, so Professor Taylor, I've just promoted you. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Eugene, for a very interesting and thoughtful report, as usual. There's obviously some very good news, and particularly the impressive decrease in smoking and the increase in breastfeeding are very good, but obviously some indicators are going in the wrong direction. And I just wanted to ask you about some of them. We've discussed it before, but I am concerned about deaths and serious injuries of children on the roads, why that's going up in Newcastle. I'd like you to explain a bit more why you think that a decrease in life expectancy in women and the static male life expectancy, the drug misuse and dementia, I don't really understand how that would be related to austerity. And could you say something about why we've got such a high level of hospital admissions for young children, both for dental careys and A&amp;D attendances? And then on another subject, we obviously had a very impressive Newcastle Can campaign about losing weight, and I just wondered how you felt we could maintain that benefit.
There are a number of questions there, Eugene. You want to take them all at once, or do you take some more?
It would take a long time.
Okay. Councillor Avery, followed by councillor Cot.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So, as with councillor Taylor, I'd like to thank you for your report. I think it's an excellent report, it was very interesting reading. What I'm going to ask about is to do with mental health and particularly suicide and suicide prevention. I think everyone across the chamber is well aware that we have an increasing crisis in particularly young people's mental health. That's something I've struggled with for all of my adult life, and have also had problems with suicidal ideation, as many young people have. Recently, a very good friend of mine was in the position of having to help in a bystander intervention with a person in distress on the Tyneside Bridge, which is unfortunately a regrettably regular occurrence, and I was wondering whether you think there's anything more we could be doing in terms of proactive public health interventions on suicide prevention, but also, I mean, I know we are doing lots of very useful stuff now, and if you'd like to say a bit more about our suicide prevention strategy and which bits you think are working, which bits you think could be improved upon.
Councillor Cot, followed by councillor Schofield.
Okay, thank you very much for your report. I was particularly interested in what you were saying about the multi-causal issues around life expectancy. I was particularly interested in the report, how you picked out a number of issues about early years and in relation to access to green open space. I'm interested in your view of how the council and partners might improve upon that, and perhaps linked in with the policy agenda. I'm also interested in what you were saying about child poverty, and I wonder if you could spell out a little bit more about how child poverty or prevention of child poverty might actually help to increase life expectancy, and if there are any studies that might actually help with this possibility.
Councillor Schofield.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you very much for your excellent and comprehensive report. You'll be aware of the protests at the monument today by disability groups against the alleged detention and torture of people with learning disabilities and autism in some privately-run assessment and treatment units such as Warton Hall in County Durham, which of course was the subject of the BBC Panorama undercover investigation in May. Well, we know that more than 2,200 people with autism are stuck in such impatient units, often very far from home, and also that around 250 children with high complex needs, mental health needs, are spending months in mental health hospitals, again, very far from home. Marmot has condemned the health inequalities facing the people with learning difficulties, disabilities, and autism, and there is a widespread call for substantial development of community facilities so that they may have the chance of a good life with the medical and social care support they need close at hand. Given the stringent cuts to our council budget, how do you think we can respond to their wish to be at home and not in hospital, and how can we more immediately prevent the abuse and torture of people in privately-run assessment and treatment units? Thank you.
There have been a number of questions there, Eugene. We'd like to take those now and ask one or two more later.
Councillor Taylor, first of all. Kildon series of injured figures on the roads, I suppose the question that I immediately asked about in relation to seeing those figures is whether or not we can relate that to any changes in policy in the city where those are taking place. We are investigating that in more detail, but at the moment, we see no specific connection with anything that we can identify, either in terms of an environmental change that we might immediately make, or in terms of actions that have been taken previously by the council. I think it remains a big issue for us, and you know that I've drawn attention to it previously, because of course the Kildon series of the injured figures for children substantially exceed those for adults in the city. They are proportionally much higher than the national average, whereas the adults are lower, and I think that if I were to try and identify how it is that we would see progress on that, I think it's tied into the broader issues around transport policy that we're beginning to address through thinking about air quality and access and so on, and some of which I've touched on further on in the report in terms of the impacts of transport on social connectivity and so on. So I think there's a collection of issues we need to address there in order to try and bring about that protection. Why women, austerity, dementia? What I was trying to identify there, first of all, is that I think that the diagnosis of dementia is used increasingly frequently on death certificates, which is a change in culture. to be isolated in old age than men, if we began to see vulnerabilities emerging because of isolation and any restrictions that we had to make in terms of the support that was offered, they would be a group we would begin to see that effect in. And that's really why I made the comparison with women in East and West Germany, where you can see that a substantial change took place in the life expectancy of East German women following the fall of the Berlin Wall, which is, as far as we can see from the literature, probably related to the two things of equilibration of pensions with the West and also with increased access to nursing and social support. And those two things, I think, are kind of inseparable from one another. So the point I was making is because you can see a specific decrease in life expectancy in women at the age of 65, it's plausible that that's one of those foci of effect that one would expect to see with austerity. That's why I focused on that particular bit. The dental careys in children issue is a very interesting one because our decayed, missing and filled rates for teeth in children at school entry are low, and that is related to the fact that we have fluoridated water, without any doubt. I asked my colleague Jonathan Looney, who are a dental colleague, to look into this some time ago, and frankly, first of all, he came back and said there are really two things involved in the dental issue, the anaesthetics one. One is access, we're close to facilities that allow that to happen. And the other is that our rates are probably better, more appropriate than many other places. And as a consequence, whereas Public Health England used to rate high rates of anaesthetic use for dental interventions in children as a kind of red, amber-green, red rating, it's gone neutral because they've decided that he's probably right, and this is something of a moot point. The A and E issue, I think, is about the way in which services are used generally across the city at the moment, and of course, is a question that our colleagues in the NHS are very concerned with because of the pressure that that puts onto secondary care, even though our primary care system, I think, is also very good. But I don't have a simple answer to that. I think it clearly continues to be a big issue for us. You asked also about Newcastle Can and how can we sustain it. There's a real danger, I think, at the moment of having a kind of collision of lots of different brands. And one of the things we've been trying to do recently is talk to colleagues across the system about whether the Newcastle Can identity is the right one to use, whether the Great North identity is one that has the most purchase, how that fits with other elements of our implementation across the city. We are looking at how we can do our best in order to sustain the individual support that Newcastle Can gave to people, and through which we've seen, and I have met people, who had quite remarkable results individually. I think there have been some real successes with that. But actually, the thing that really sold me on Newcastle Can overall throughout the time that we ran it was the way in which it raised awareness and began to get people thinking about the broader issues that related to obesity. I've tried to illustrate that a little bit in the report as well. I think that's terribly important, and that we want to sustain because ultimately, obesity is a very complex issue. It's not going to be resolved by individual intervention, it certainly won't be resolved by focusing on children with obesity and intervening individually with those. It is far more likely that we'll be able to shift things by a broader, system-wide approach to those complex issues, which will involve regulation and national change and so on. Councillor Avery picked up on suicide in young people and mental health issues, and I completely sympathise. There is a very interesting dichotomy, I think, between what we see in terms of some of the objective quantitative statistics relating to child health and what we hear and see elsewhere, both in the experience of people dealing with young people in the city, and also in measures of the wellbeing of children in developed societies. And we've talked about this in relation to the UNICEF work and so on. And I think, as I've identified in the report, I wish that we had better measures to allow us to understand what the pressures are on young people and how we might cope with those better. This does relate to what I've said later on in the report about adverse childhood experiences and their influences. But actually, what I really want us to do around adverse childhood experiences is not focus so much on those experiences themselves, but to think more about the resilience factors and the degree to which we're able to support resilience in children and young people across the city. You mentioned also the Tyneside Bridge and issues that we might, things that we might do in order to try and prevent suicide. The bridges issue, interestingly, is one that comes up fairly regularly, but a lot of the actions that take place around bridges, as I understand it, tend really to be displacement rather than prevention. So I'm kind of reluctant, particularly knowing that one of the preventive, celebrated preventive approaches that was taken on a major bridge in Sull resulted in that bridge being identified as a site for suicides that increased the numbers overall. So I think we need to be quite cautious about what we do. I think also, we need to be conscious of what those numbers are telling us. The numbers of suicides are very low. Again, it's really hard to interpret with such small numbers what's going on. The thing we should be really interested in is that underlying level of resilience and mental health support that we're able to offer, and that, I think, is really where we should be focusing. Councillor Cot asked about multi-course life expectancy, early years and green space. The evidence around green space, I think, has improved markedly in recent years. The study that I've quoted from Denmark is the largest and one of the most interesting, particularly because it takes a prospective approach. Instead of looking at association between things now, it looks at the way things were for children when they were young and the subsequent development, mental health and likelihood of substance abuse. How do we make this better? A few years ago, I looked at the New York policy, which identified green space as a, I think, they would try and achieve within a certain, I think it was nine minutes walking distance of everybody's home. You look at Newcastle, we're probably there already. So from our perspective, a lot of this is going to be about the way green space is used and how it's perceived, the way that people are able to engage with it, and whether or not they feel safe in using that and what it means to them. I think that what we're trying to do in conjunction with the Parks Trust very much plays to that agenda, and certainly the dialogue I've been having with James Cross and the Parks Trust has been about how we try and develop that and make it space that people feel safe and people can use and can benefit from in the ways that we think are now being demonstrated in the literature. I do think that those things will then feed through into life expectancy figures, and of course, impacting on children at an early stage adds a lot of years to the life table, so you can get bigger effects at that sort of level. Councillor Schofield's question is about learning disability and autism. So part of what is in progress at the moment, trying to see where you're there, sorry, in progress around the mental health trailblazer approach in the city at the moment is that we're just moving into the second phase of the mental health trailblazer stuff with young people, and there what we're doing is expanding that offer to focus more on autism and support in the community to try and develop that side. But bear in mind, the services that you're describing are not services that we commission through public health, and we have a limited amount of influence over how those might change. I do think one of our difficulties in thinking about the mental health of young people is that question of whether we need to focus more specifically down into particular causes, or whether we should be looking for a broader approach to resilience and wellbeing, which plays to the question that councillor Avery asked. And I think that's a problem for us because we have a limited resource, obviously, and need to think about where we're going to get the biggest impact. So some of the specialist stuff that you describe, I think, is much more for our NHS colleagues rather than for us, but we do work closely with them to try and coordinate that.
Thank you. That's rather more than six questions, but I will allow one more each. Councillor Avery, followed by councillor Todd, please.
Thank you for a very transparent report. My question is on the smoking cessation services that we have in the city. Is there anything that we can do in the city council to enhance the success rate of smoking cessation services, and how does the half a percentage contribution by smoking cessation services in the city compare to other major cities or the national average, if you have that information?
And councillor Todd?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thanks for a very interesting report, Dr Milne. My question was also about perhaps another aspect of green space as a supportive factor in health, and I wondered if there's any evidence you're aware of between the value, relative value of different types of green space. I suppose I'm thinking there of allotments as green space, tends to be a very active environment and quite sociable, though sometimes antisociable as well, and another type of green space like a field, which might be fairly empty and might be more of a solitary activity.
Okay. Taking those then one at a time, the smoking cessation services, how can we improve them? We are at the moment in dialogue with the NHS of the NHS Long Term Plan aspiration to substantially increase smoking cessation support through secondary and primary care, for which I understand there will be new funding coming through the NHS in the near future. This fits very much with what we've been trying to do in the city over the last few years, where we've developed links into secondary care, where we can route people in from those moments of decision that they might be facing when they go up to hospital for an anaesthetic assessment or an appointment, so they can enter our stop smoking services and we can take advantage of that. We can also improve the outcomes by moving to some of the more proven treatments. Veramicline is an effective intervention, it's better than nicotine replacement therapy where it can be used. And I would like to see an expansion of those sorts of numbers. In terms of the volume that I described, the 0.5% of that nearly 10% fall, probably reasonably comparable, slightly lower than some areas but higher than a lot of the rest of the country, I would say. The thing to remember about this, and I think is terribly important, is you can look at that and think, is that worth having in the context of the broader change? And the answer is it is, because these are highly cost-effective individual interventions. They are of great value to the individuals who are concerned. We're talking really about, you know, a few hundred pounds maximum per quality adjusted life year compared with NHS expenditures of £20,000 to £30,000 per quality adjusted life year. So they're very much worth having. We can go further with them, but part of the point I was making is that if we really want to get down to the target of, you know, what's generally thought of as a smoke-free society, which is around about 5%, most of what we're going to achieve will not be through those kinds of interventions, it will be through the broader tobacco control measures, at which I think we've been very, very good in the North East, and I think that, as I've alluded to in the report, that has been reflected nationally. I'd like to see us go further than we have with this. We've certainly not constrained it in terms of access. We've had our services are more open than, I think, in most of the region, never mind the rest of the country. And we've tried to make them easy to use in the sense that we use a patient group directive for prescribing, so that patients, clients coming to the stop smoking service don't need to go back to their GPs to get prescriptions, they get a voucher and they can go to the chemists and get the NRT directly that way. We're always open to new ideas, and I've just this afternoon met with the coordinator of the new respiratory network for the northern region, the integrated care system, to talk about how we might work more closely together with them and with respiratory consultants across the region. A thing I would really like us to focus on is smoking cessation and harm reduction in people with chronic obstructive lung disease, where I think there's an enormous amount of suffering which could be alleviated, and also, frankly, a very large amount of service use that might be reduced. Coming back to the green space and the distinction, I think one of the things that I said is the literature on this has been developing. I think it's better now than it was in the past, and for a long time, the studies were a wee bit flaky. I don't think they are anymore. I think we're beginning to see some very clear evidence of the benefits of green space, but I don't think we're at the stage where you could make a clear distinction between different types of green space, particularly because so much of it is dependent on the way that people use it and the way that they feel about it. I think if you feel good in a field, that's great, if you feel good on allotment, that's great. We need to make sure that people feel safe and can use those spaces in an appropriate way. But I don't think I could give you a kind of value judgement about which of those is necessarily better. I might have a personal opinion, but I don't have an evidence base to be able to give you a clear answer on that. All I can say is that the more we have and the more people are able to access it, I think that the happier and healthier we'll all be.
Thank you. There were a number of other people who'd indicated they want to ask questions, but may I ask if you email them to Professor Milne and let us all know the answers? So, does council agree to receive the report?
Agreed.
Thank you very much, Professor Milne.
Thank you.
Move on then to item eight, the overview and scrutiny annual report. I'll call on councillor Lower to move the report, which is to be seconded by councillor Holland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Before I start, can I just say congratulations to my colleague from Castle Ward for his first speech?
I was actually going to leave that it was an actual speech rather than a question.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, he's done it.
Congratulations, Lord Mayor.
It's well done from me. It's a pleasure, I have to say, to introduce the usual scrutiny report. It's been a pretty busy year for us. We've done 39 committees, we've covered 53 subjects, we've done a call-in, and we've had a couple of task and finish groups. But that's not the real story. I think it's, the number of councillors who partake in scrutiny is big, and we would like to see more people. You're very welcome to come along, you don't have to be a member. But I'd like to thank everyone who has been part of the committees over the past year. Their contribution has really been worthwhile, and you don't have to be an expert, all you've got to do is ask the kind of questions that the members of the public want the answers to. So thank you for that. I also would like to thank our two co-opdies who are there for education purposes and who turn up and sit through lots of agenda items to comment on one or two education things maybe once every six months, however, they are really useful in their contributions. I think in this council scrutiny works, it is independent, and I have to thank the Cabinet members for that. They come along and they give their reports, but there is not a political note to that, it is about information and about how the council works. And I think that it tells that there is such things, such as the way strategy and that the Cabinet come and we look more and more at things before the decisions are made, rather than just commenting on them afterwards, and that's the important thing. So thank you to all of those who do that. I have to say, we've had one failure this year yet again. For the last few years, we've been unsuccessfully trying to get the Police and Crime Commissioner to attend scrutiny meetings. We've been a bit like a martini, you know, anytime, anyplace, anywhere, we'd accept her. However, she has not taken us upon our offer and has decided to leave. Hopefully, that relationship will be better in the future, but it is important that scrutiny and this council understand the whole picture of what's going on across the region and not just in this chamber. But thank you, everyone who's partook, thank you, everyone who's contributed, and we will continue. Thank you, and thanks to Paula.
Councillor Holland?
Thanks, councillor Lower. I'm happy to second this report and extend my thanks to Karen Criston, the policy officer for scrutiny. I also want to thank the 40 members of the scrutiny groups for their hard work. We undertook 630 hours of scrutiny last year, as well as all the local authority officers who attend, and also the numerous voluntary and statutory groups and all those services who come along as well and give evidence. Thank you.
Okay, this item is now open for debate and comments, so if I can ask councillor Mendelssohn, please, to speak, followed by councillor Taylor?
Thank you. I just wanted to say a couple of things relating to the scrutiny report. As I've been vice-chair of health scrutiny for a number of years and also a member of overview and scrutiny, I'm aware how many topics have been covered, obviously that's been mentioned already, and I think this report highlights the whole range of stuff that we have looked at. We've had a lot of work by committee members and above all by the scrutiny officers responsible, and the quality of the scrutiny is as good as the quality of the scrutiny officers, I have to say. And over the past year, one particular officer, Karen Criston, the scrutiny manager, has supported both... been mentioned already, and I think this report highlights the whole range of stuff that we have looked at. Involved a lot of work by committee members and above all by the scrutiny officers responsible, and the quality of the scrutiny is as good as the quality of the scrutiny officers, I have to say. And over the past year, one particular officer, Karen Criston, the scrutiny manager, has supported both committees and also been heavily involved in written-up research, convened, reported on the two scrutiny task groups on the waste strategy, and one we are just completing on access to health and social care of BME communities, which I think will have some quite important recommendations. The quality of the scrutiny is as good as the officers', and so I do believe Karen really deserves our thanks. The second point is about the public nature of scrutiny, health and scrutiny and overview and scrutiny are meetings held in public, and it's important that Newcastle residents know this. There have been a number of articles in the Journal and Chronicle, to which we must thank Daniel Holland, who I'm sure is probably here this evening somewhere, yes, for bringing those to the people's public attention. At Health Scrutiny, we work very closely with Healthwatch, and it's quite a good focus for a number of different NHS providers and other health providers to come together and talk about issues, and we encourage members of the public to be involved when they come along. They can raise issues that we may not even be aware of, and above all, reports are of course available in the council website. They scrutinize, they scrutinise in a way, and we do discover an awful lot of topics, so it's good if we can get the message out there that the meetings are very interesting and there's an awful lot of useful information. Thank you very much.
Councillor Taylor, followed by councillor Frew.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As Chair of Health Scrutiny, I'd like to add my thanks particularly to Karen Criston, who has been a superb scrutiny officer for several years for Health Scrutiny. She's done a huge amount of work, and we're really disappointed that she's not going to carry on doing that, but I can understand that trying to look after two committees has proved too much, and you very much welcome Janet to the role. I'd also like to thank all the members, officers and our partners who've been involved in Health Scrutiny and made it such an interesting committee to chair. We've discussed a huge number of important issues this year, such as health and social care integration, the lack of a plan for dealing with the social care crisis, mental health, both for students and young people, but also the CCG plans to relocate adult mental health care. We've got this important task and finish group, as Felicity said, looking at the health needs of the black and minority ethnic community. We're looking at the plans for GP networks, which is going to change the way services are provided for people across the city. And we've also expressed concern over falling levels of screening. And again, as Felicity has mentioned, we've had several excellent reports from Healthwatch looking at issues that we might not otherwise have raised. So thanks to everybody involved, and I hope we'll have a successful year this time as well.
Thank you. Councillor Frew, followed by councillor Hall.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So speaking from the perspective of being on the Finance and Budget Subscrutiny Committee for the last year, again, I'd like to thank all of the members of the committee and the officers. The officers have been very open and ready to answer some difficult and circuitous questions. And sometimes the members don't always put them in the plainest of language, and the officers manage to make the question and the answer intelligible somehow. So the main function of the committee is to ensure that the council is staying prudent, and I think the committee is doing a good job of that, and is demonstrating that the council is making use of the resources that it has effectively. And I would have liked to mention some of the people who were bringing up the climate emergency earlier, we did have a discussion about the overview of that issue, we have discussed at length cycle investment throughout the city this year. It is something that has been discussed quite publicly at these committee meetings. And so looking forward to the year ahead, there are many ways that the committee can improve, and I hope that both parties in this chamber are willing to have dialogue on this going forwards. Thank you.
Councillor Hall, followed by councillor Higgins.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Scrutiny is really vital to what we do as a council, allowing checks and balances, but critically, an apolitical and challenging, but hopefully supportive friend in decision-making. This works best when we have engagement from the council, both officers, who are always engaging and open, at least to my experience, but also policymakers informing a true dialogue. And councillor Frew's point, I'm more than happy to form a dialogue on these matters. And this has shone through sometimes this year, on issues like the SEND report that came to overview and scrutiny, on the welfare and mental health issues for council staff that we've been looking at in finance and budget, in councillor safety as well, which was raised during one of the overview and scrutiny meetings, and most obviously in the whole process for forming the council's budget. On these issues and others, scrutiny this year has helped to focus minds and to push forward policy and practical changes. This has been through cross-party effort and cooperation. As Chair of the Finance and Budget Scrutiny, I'm proud of the work that we are doing to analyse the progress of the new spending proposals, and for this next year to use them to help inform the decision-making for the next budget and to keep that cycle going in years to come. I'd like to offer my personal thanks to all the members of the Finance and Budget Scrutiny Committee for their engagement and for their neutrality, in particular Dan Greenoff, who was the vice chair this year, and also to the officers who regularly attend, in particular Helen Dickinson, Kirsty Wilkinson, Mark Mickelson, who have to be at pretty much every one of the meetings and sit through our circuitous questions, but also to our scrutiny officer, Janet Howard, for the excellent work that she does to enable us to do this vital process. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Higgins?
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. Mine's just a question, or a fairly brief question or observation related to the report on the overview and scrutiny committee. And can I, you know, thank councillor Lower for her introduction to the report and for the report itself, which I think is very informative about the scope of the work that the committee carries out. In the introduction, councillor Lower points to an influx of new scrutineers or scrutiny members who bring new perspective and experience to help support the scrutiny function. I hope that I've been able to assist in bringing this new perspective to what is a robust and effective scrutiny system, and I wonder whether councillor Lower shares my view that this is a very positive reflection of the democratic accountability and decision-making of the current Labour council. Thank you.
Okay, no one else has indicated they want to contribute to this debate, so councillor Lower, I'm sure you want to respond to that last as if nothing else.
If I have to, Lord Mayor. Yeah, I don't think it's anyone's scrutiny, I think it's not Labour, Lib Dem or anything, this is Newcastle City Council's overview and scrutiny panel committee, whatever you want to call it, which oversees the work of this council, and I think everyone in this chamber has a role in that, and we should all be pleased with the tough scrutiny, but very fair and very even-handed and, I hope, constructive. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council agree to receive this report?
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you. If we move on then to item nine, which is the proposed additional meeting of council, I'll call on councillor Jackie Robinson to move the report, which will be seconded by councillor Durrant.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. All I'm going to say is, the report, we recommend an extra meeting in October, it's down to the workload that we have that will be coming to council, so I just want to put it out there and accept it, please.
Councillor Durrant, if you should say anything? Okay. Councillor Woodock?
Just a little, the process for this has been a bit cart before the horse. It came on the agenda for this council. I'm a little concerned because Constitutional Committee is supposed to have been working for nearly a year on the process for city council, including the number of council meetings, but that work has seemingly gone into the sand for a variety of reasons, to do with the chair and other things like that, that are perfectly acceptable. But you do have to ask, the process that we've got for bringing this new council meeting, which is laudable, because it means there is more opportunity for every councillor in this city to actually bring forward what they believe is important for this city. But the way it's being done really does, yeah, stick in the crawl, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Donnelly?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Council will recall that when it was proposed on the 27th of May 2015 to reduce council meetings from 10 to 8, I objected. This would lead to less accountability and scrutiny. The council would be well aware that council meetings are described in the Newcastle Charter as the people's forum. True democracy must be seen and heard in action as often as possible. I therefore fully support the proposal and hope that for the benefit of openness and transparency, we move back to 10 meetings a year. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
No one else has indicated they wish to contribute, so councillor Robinson, do you wish to respond to anything that's been said?
Before I do, Lord Mayor, obviously councillor Donnelly's been up and has spoken, and I wish to know when he's still going to apologise, because he still hasn't apologised, Lord Mayor. Is there an apology there, Mr Donnelly? No? Okay, thank you. The reason that we've brought this, Lord Mayor, is because Constitutional is not meeting until July. So we've brought it now, because by September's meeting comes along, it would be too late, so we're asking that council will accept this. Thank you.
Okay, does council agree the recommendation in the report?
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you. If we can move on to item 10, which is the Educational Skills Annual Report, and I'll now call on councillor McCarthy to move and introduce it.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. In the absence of councillor Dunn, I'm presenting the report on her behalf this evening. First of all, Lord Mayor, can we as council place on record our thanks to everyone who has pulled this report together? I think we'd want special thanks to go to the schools for contributing the photographs that actually bring the report to life. And, Lord Mayor, I think for next year, and maybe since the officers are in the room, I think we need to sort out the timing of this report, because we're receiving a report at the end of June for results that were announced last August, so it does feel that we're nearly ready for the next year's annual report, when we're receiving the previous one, so I do think we need to review that. I think the timing of this report, Lord Mayor, is also helpful as well, because having heard our Director of Public Health share with us the context in our city of child poverty, and actually, I think, quite significant, the impact of mental health on children and young people in our city, I think that helps to give a context and an understanding, really, of what we need to do to support the children and young people, which in the report in front of us talks about no child being left behind. And if we want to make a commitment to achieve that, then clearly we've got to address those issues that have already been shared with us tonight. Lord Mayor, some key highlights, standards achieved by our primary age children, so children who are 10 and 11, put us in the top 10 local authorities in the country, especially, for example, in progress in reading and writing from key stage one to two. Standards in particular in primary age children who live in the most disadvantaged parts of our city, or those children with special educational needs or disabilities, are also high and above national average. Sadly, standards received, achieved by our secondary age pupils are much more varied, and clearly that gives us a challenge about what we do. You know, some of our secondary schools perform magnificently whilst others make improvements that are perhaps not at the pace that we would expect. And so that kind of spiky picture with outcomes of young people from disadvantaged backgrounds and those with special educational needs is a challenge, I think. Eradicating that at the end of secondary education is obviously a key focus and is there highlighted in the priorities for the next year. We're generally on track to reach the stated goal of all schools in Newcastle being rated good or outstanding by Ofsted by the summer of next year, although there is still quite a bit to do, as you will see, we're below the national average in terms of secondary school Ofsted ratings. Lord Mayor, we are all aware, we're probably all emailed fairly regularly about the challenge schools have around funding, we will continue to lobby to make sure that, you know, I'm sure we've all signed the petitions that have been circulated by the teacher unions, and that will continue, of course, to be a challenge in our city. And indeed, we also need support for capital investment in our schools. I think the growth of the pupil population is quite challenging, we've clearly got to provide a school place for every child in our city, and we therefore need to make sure we've got enough places to meet their needs. Lord Mayor, I think it was reported in the overview and scrutiny committee report as well, that the focus on the local offer for children and young people with special educational needs and disabilities and their families, to make sure that they have the right support at the right time, has been a key focus over the last year. And we'll not be surprised to know that attendance in schools is not good enough at the moment, and actually, it's the exclusion rates, you know, the permanent exclusion rates are also really high. The proportion of school leavers at 16 and 17 who end up in education, employment or training is above the national average, we should be really proud of that, because actually that is, that has been a challenge for some years, and we've turned that curve. And I think, Lord Mayor, in terms of positive work, we look forward to the North of Tyne Education Challenge Proposals that we will pull together alongside our colleagues in Northumberland and North Tyneside as part of the solutions for the future, and I think the investment priorities for the future are set out on page 58 of the report. Lord Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions, and obviously, as it's not the portfolio holder of the questions, I'm not able to answer, we'll obviously provide that subsequently. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. A number of people have indicated they want to contribute or question, not absolutely sure who they are, but councillor Borissey, followed by councillor Holland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I echo the thanks said by councillor McCartney to the officers involved in producing this report, and to all the teachers, support staff and learners within Newcastle for all the hard work that goes into teaching and learning, and for what's been done in the past year? My question was to the cabinet member responsible, however, I will still make it, and as you said, look forward to a reply. Can it be explained what specific support is being put in place to four of our secondary schools to facilitate their moving from their most recent reports, Ofsted reports, which deemed these schools to need either special measures or requiring improvement to progress to becoming at least good or preferably outstanding, and thereby offering our children and young people the education and opportunities they deserve, and to quote from the report, ensure no child is left behind and no school is left behind? Thank you.
Thank you for that. Can I congratulate you on your maiden speech contribution to council, councillor Borissey? Thank you. Councillor Holland?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, councillor Dunn, in her absence, for a very detailed and comprehensive report. I was particularly pleased to see that apprenticeships and adult learning are both performing above the national average. And my question is specifically around that sort of area, as the adult education budget is being devolved locally, I'm looking for a bit more reassurance that the funding is going to be targeted at increasing people's employability and skills. Thank you.
Councillor Cot, followed by councillor Lambert.
Okay, thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Thank you very much for...
Okay, thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Thank you very much for the report, and again, thanks to officers for putting it together. I think it's a very comprehensive report. I agree with a lot that councillor McCarthy has said about progress in this city, and I think there's a lot to be thankful for and to praise the schools and the concerned in ensuring that this happens. My question, however, relates to the broad thrust of the report. You make very clear, and I think this is really important, that no child should be left behind, no school should be left behind. But is there a possibility of over-promising and under-delivering, given the blunt instruments that are available to actually deal with some of these issues? And is there enough sufficient political leadership in this city to be able to achieve, to deal with some great challenges? One was mentioned about secondary education, some of the secondary schools' inspection reports, including one community school. There's also the local offer for send pupils. There are issues, there are mixed achievements and attainment in terms of children who are disadvantaged, and we've got a major problem with attendance, which I think needs to be addressed. And of course, the big issue, which is explained a lot in the report, is around school places. And I'm just checking that we're still on track to achieve the 2,700 additional school places that are needed for this city by 2030. Thank you very much.
Councillor Lambert, followed by councillor Law.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Joyce, for presenting a very detailed, meticulous report. Clearly, one of the major challenges is the extent of needs, and it's very gratifying to see that these have now come down, been reduced considerably. My question is as follows. Given that there's an ongoing policy debate regarding the gender divide in educational attainment and participation rates, with young men now arguably being the underachievers, or some young men, or some working class young men, has the educational gender gap, has this narrowed between young men and young women in the city at the age of 16? And two, assuming that young men are still the underachievers, what strategies are there in place to address this underachievement of boys in Newcastle upon Tyne? Thank you.
I've got no more indication. Oh, councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is certainly a very detailed and interesting report, but I do have a bit of a concern about it being presented not by the cabinet member. Now, I can understand that may be unavoidable, but this is the opportunity for council members to ask questions of the cabinet member, and I just wonder whether councillor Dunn might consider doing so later in the year. I was in any case a little concerned by the fact that she'd only just got into post and was expected to present her report quite so early in her tenure of this role. I would have thought it was under the control of the Labour administration when these reports came to council, and perhaps they could look at that in future, as councillor McCarthy suggested. The actual questions I've got, firstly, on disadvantaged children. It's interesting that they're doing so well at primary school, but not doing so well at secondary school. Obviously, the pupil premium money has been quite useful to schools in trying to boost the teaching for disadvantaged children, and I just wondered what work had been done, and what strategies were most effective, and what more we could do for the secondary school pupils to try and keep them on the path that they've achieved in primary school. Another figure that caught my eye, that I was a bit concerned about, was when it talked about looked after children, saying that 42% of our looked after children are educated in schools outside Newcastle, and I just wondered what the reason for that was.
Councillor Donnelly?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Wall bottle campus has struggled to maintain constant improvement over time. Not my words, but the words of Mark Patton, Assistant Director of Education and Skills. It is worth noting that since the excellent middle schools, which closed in 2006, 13 years have now passed, and Wall Bottle is still failing to deliver, which affects the life chances of young people. In the recent Ofsted inspection, Wall Bottle was placed into special measures, and what is damning is that that is in all categories which classed it as inadequate, including outcomes for pupils. Will the cabinet member reassure council that every effort is being made to improve the situation? Considering that back in 2017, the cabinet member at the time stated that Wall Bottle had a history of underperformance. Will the cabinet member also give an update on the future of education within the Outer West and the city as a result of the new house building? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Okay, that's all the people who've indicated they wish to speak. So does council agree to receive the report? Sorry, I beg your pardon. I'm assuming that you wish to respond.
I would, Lord Mayor, if that's okay. Thank you. Councillor Morrissey asks about no child being left behind, and what specific support are we giving to the four secondary schools in the city? Clearly, that's a detailed question for the team in education, but can I just reassure council that that work is being done and that support is being given? And actually, I think the Promise Board, and, Lord Mayor, this is not my field in Newcastle, although I'm obviously an educationalist, I think the Promise Board is doing quite a lot of school-to-school support, and so I think we can be confident that schools are supporting one another in our city. Councillor Holland asks me about apprenticeships, particularly in relation to the devolution of the adult education budget to North of Tyne, and can I reassure her and colleagues across the council chamber that that will be targeted on employability and skills? One key aspect and makes our North of Tyne devolution deal unique across the country is our work on inclusive growth, and that does mean that employability skills will be core to the support that will be available, not just to those in schools, but to people who are of working age too. Councillor Cot, do we have the political leadership, or are we over-promising and under-delivering? I do believe, councillor Cot, that when you were in Coalition, your series of academies broke up the education system in this country. I think you've got no hope in scoring political points here. We are absolutely working as hard as we can, given the limitations of what funding and what support we've got because of austerity introduced by the Coalition government. We are using everything that we're able to use in this city to make sure we're doing our best for children in our schools. I think that was a deplorable question. And, Lord Mayor, of course, we are making sure that we've got school places. We've got very clear plans, I think they're set out in the report in front of you, for the additional places that are needed around the housing growth in the Outer West. Councillor Lambert asks me about the gender gap. Lord Mayor, the gender gap has narrowed at 16 in English and mathematics last year. Of course, there's a whole new cohort this year, so we shall see what happens this year, particularly at the past, strong past, you know, the new grades at GCSE. Boys do better than girls in maths, and girls do better than boys in English. That's probably no surprise to councillor Lambert. What strategies are in place to address that underachievement? So we have worked across North of Tyne and have a number of projects that are doing that through strategic school improvement funding to improve the outcomes for key groups of learners. The region was one of the most successful recipients of those projects, and they've been running for some time. So perhaps we can pass on some further information in relation to that. Councillor Taylor raises concerns about councillor Dunn not being present. I think she had next week as council meeting rather than this week, and we've moved this for some time, so she's actually on holiday. In relation to pupil premium and what strategies are most effective, you know, clearly, I don't know, so we'll have to get an answer to you. And where looked after children are educated depends on where they come from, and where their carers are, and we understand that there is movement across the local authorities in the locality. And councillor Donnelly asks if we are making every effort to improve the situation in Wall Bottle. Can I just reassure him and say yes, and we're still waiting for an apology to the Lord Mayor? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
There are a number of appointments that are... Oh, does council agree to receive the report? I'll get it right in a minute. Agreed, thank you. There are a number of appointments before you there. I think there's just, there's one for licensing, I believe, but there's also one to be added verbally.
Can we add councillor Barnes to Sacre, please?
Okay, are those appointments agreed together with councillor Barnes for Sacre? Agreed, thank you very much. If we can now move on to item 12, which is the first notice of motion this evening, Power of the North. I'll call on councillor Stone to move this motion to be seconded by councillor Ashby.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The Power of the North campaign by regional newspapers has been a useful reminder that there is broad support across the North for a renewed focus on the priorities, powers and prosperity of the North of England. There may well be grounds for some political sniping at the northern powerhouse as just a branding gimmick rather than a substantive strategy, but that may be partially true, but the same could also be said of the Northern Way a few years ago, too. It remains of vital importance to narrow the north-south divide and grow the economy, the skills and the potential of the North by devolving powers and budgets from London. It's important this agenda continues, particularly after the forthcoming change in prime minister, and I am not confident that the members for Uxbridge and South West Surrey have this sufficiently high on their agendas. It will be useful to remind them of these aims, and certainly, there is a real and legitimate concern with regard to regional funding post Brexit in terms of what support this region will get out of the so-called Shared Prosperity Fund, and the indications we've seen so far is the North East will be considerably worse off as a result of that. I'm pleased that many of the campaign's points seem to have cross-party support. There is a broad degree of commonality between the motion and the amendment, although I see some points have been inserted and one or two have been airbrushed out. I'm pleased that one of the many of the points of the campaign chimes closely with my party's regional manifesto at the last German election, which was called 'liberating our potential'. I should probably decline interest in that, because I wrote it. I note that a section has been inserted in the amendment hailing the combined authority for the North of Tyne as a significant step forwards for devolution, greater devolution to the region. Well, up to a point, Lord Copper, it is a step forwards, but it's a fairly small step, and there is much further travel on this road. We will need to show the region is capable of maximising its potential and making effective use of the budgets and powers it has been given before we can expect to be granted significantly more powers, although I do accept the argument that will be made that there is hope for expanding the devolution deals that have been extended to this region already. One of the most important challenges we face is ensuring more effective cooperation with the rest of the North East rather than competing with our neighbours in the South of Tyne and the Tees Valley. I note that the motion section on this has been airbrushed out of the amendments, but unless we do recognise this truth and tackle it, it will persist. Denying the problem will not help to fix it. Another important challenge is to ensure we don't get left behind as other parts of the region, of the North of England, accrue more powers, more budgets, and as a result, more competitiveness. I see councillor Forbes' amendment seeks to re-regulate the buses. I'm glad that my motion has still entered some action on this, because there's been no progress on the Tyne and May bus strategy for several years now, and this is a consequence of not having the same powers as any to us in the North of Tyne as the Sheffield region already has and the Greater Manchester one already has. And I think it's probably no coincidence that this announcement comes just days after Andy Burnham announced comprehensive transport plans for Greater Manchester. We don't yet have those powers, and our transport system is increasingly under strain. That's why we need a level playing field on this. Otherwise, we risk not just seeing a widening north-south divide across the country, but a growing north-south divide within the North as well. And there is a real risk of the South, the M62 corridor, being the haves, and the rest of the North, including the North East, being the have-nots. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Ashby?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Back in the day, before multiple changes and reorganisations by meddling national politicians, a regional development agency, eventually called One North East, was proposed. The good old days of regional unity. I was asked to carry out some research on the task ahead for the poorest English region. The outcome boiled down to a single sentence. To become average for the English regions, we would have to grow at double the rate of every other region for at least a generation. That was a generation ago. It didn't happen. We're still the poorest English region. That was and still is the scale of the task. In supporting this motion and thanking the media for throwing their weight behind the northern powerhouse, and that late than ever, I cannot help but note a new report from Cambridge Economics and Cambridge University for Core Cities says that the city growth could be at risk and that a harder Brexit will have a severe impact on the economies of Leeds, Liverpool, Manchester and Newcastle. HS2 rail starts in the South East and might eventually make it to the North, but not in my lifetime. Unlike most European economies, we have one mega-city which dominates, and our smaller cities are minnows by comparison. On Tyneside, we're hampered by our past. The four authorities on the north and south side of the river could together rank up there with Manchester and Birmingham. Just to say, North of Tyne shows we aren't making the most of scale, thanks to foot-dragging by Labour authorities between the Tyne and the Tees, who could not put aside their petty jealousies. So we have a sub-optimal, but the only possible grouping to get mayoral powers. Yet, those powers are inferior to, say, the Sheffield mayoral deal. And the sorts of funding we might get from it will be less than we will lose from EU structural funds. And even the first million is going on advisers to an inexperienced mayor, Labour being unable to put up someone of substance for what might, with the right approach, become a little more significant in future. The government hasn't yet started distributing the so-called Shared Prosperity Fund, despite Grandio's words. They may have a cunning plan, but like Tory leadership contenders, they aren't sharing it with us mere mortals. Maybe it's not so cunning after all. And it's not just about money. I'd like to see a return of strong leadership and civic commitment among the business community, the sort of thing that in the 19th century led the city fathers of Birmingham to invest in the infrastructure which carried them through to the present day. Lord Mayor, I second the motion.
Thank you, honour. Call on councillor Forbes to move an amendment to this motion, which will be seconded, I believe, by councillor McCarthy.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The sentiment of this motion is generally fine. Who could argue with the concept of further devolution, further powers, further responsibilities for the North of England? And it's worth noting that five years on from the announcement that the then Chancellor of the Exchequer, George Osborne, made about the creation of a northern powerhouse, many people are starting to question whether there's been real weight behind this agenda from central government. So, of course, it's timely that we come together, in the spirit of most of the substance of this motion, across the North and continue to campaign for the tools and resources that will enable us to transform our economy and create a better society for our communities. But there are, Lord Mayor, some major omissions in the motion. There's no mention of the wider rail connectivity between the different parts of Northern Powerhouse Rail, East Coast Mainline improvements, HS2 and wider network rail improvements across the network. There's no mention in the original motion, which is why it's in the amendment, of the creation of the North of Tyne Combined Authority, which despite what councillor Stone says, I think is a significant step forward in the devolution journey for our region, because it plants the first flag around which further devolution can be built. And it already has an ambitious programme around housing, around devolution of the adult education budget, around an investment fund which is there to support the kind of jobs that we'll be able to create in the future. And the combined authority is already thinking about how we promote areas where we have sectoral strength through our local and regional industrial strategy. There's no mention in the original motion of bus regulation. And I noted councillor Stone's comments at this, which I found slightly puzzling, given that when we went through the process several years ago of... that when we went through the process several years ago of trying to introduce bus regulation through the Quality Contract Scheme, the main opponent of that at the time was councillor Stone himself, who argued against it. And the current system of bus deregulation is failing the travelling public. We have some of the highest fares, we have routes which are under threat, and we have buses in some parts of our region which are polluting the environment. This is not good enough, and I've just come from London, where any bus journey will cost you £1.50. In this city, some bus journeys will cost you upwards of £3.60. How can anybody justify that differential? So we need to tackle buses, because buses are at the heart of the public transport network. Three times more people travel on buses than on the metro system, and it's absolutely essential that we see that as a key plank of our public transport infrastructure moving forward. And the other omission, Lord Mayor, in this original motion, which I've sought to add in a little paragraph or in, to amend the omission, is that there was no mention of austerity and the impact of austerity on this region and the capacity of this region to drive it forward. We had in 2010 a network of Sure Start centres in this city, which were transforming life chances for families and children across the whole of Newcastle. Nowadays, we get no ring-fenced grant for them, and we've had to ensure that the support that we give through the early years teams is targeted to the most vulnerable. It's not a universal service anymore. But there was no doubt that that was the kind of investment in early years and in children and families that we're starting to see a transformation in the education system. And if the overall ambition is for children and young people to achieve more at school, then they need the very best start in life. And yet that was the rug that was pulled from under their feet by the coalition government. And the other rug that was pulled was, councillor Ashby mentioned, regional development agencies. They were, of course, scrapped by the coalition government, by the business secretary in the coalition government, one Sir Vince Cable, who is now the leader of the Liberal Democrats. So it's a bit odd to hear people on that side of the chamber starting to say that this was all a great mistake, or perhaps they are admitting that it was all a great mistake. So, Lord Mayor, the thrust of my amendment to the motion is to simply redress the things that have been omitted from it and to set out some of the things that we are seeking to achieve through the new devolution arrangements, which I know are already starting to bear fruit, and I would therefore urge council to support the amendment. Thank you.
Councillor McCarthy? Okay, thank you. Councillor Cot? No? Councillor Woodock?
Lord Mayor, like many in this chamber, I believe that this city should be at the national vanguard for economic regeneration. It isn't, and for once, that's not the fault of Newcastle Labour Party. It's the fault of a northern powerhouse that has so far failed to deliver, coming across as it does, as in reality, Manchester, Liverpool, Leeds and no more. We so desperately need to improve across the entire region, mainly for the points that councillor Forbes has made out. I do hear about his comments about the North of Tyne Authority. I'll add 'outs better than now', that's true. The motion and amendment are a statement of intent. We need to get this region, and I mean the whole region, back where it so belongs and where its vitality so needs regenerating.
Councillor Avery, followed by councillor Fairley.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I actually agree with a lot of what councillor Woodock just said, and it's, it's nice for, to hear some of the other sides admit for once that it isn't our fault that some problems exist in this city. I want to expand a bit more on the, the issue of buses, which councillor Forbes talked about, because councillor Stone said that, you know, at least seemed to admit in some ways that deregulation might be a problem. And as councillor Forbes points out, this is in somewhat of a tension with the remarks that he made very publicly in the press when the Quality Contract Scheme was, was being fought out. And he says, 'We were defeated in the courts'. We're defeated in the courts because of deeply inadequate legislation. This is in fact part of that deregulation. It is ridiculous, the grounds on which we were defeated. It is ridiculous that, the fact that companies might make some financial detriment was placed ahead of the enormous needs and benefits that could have come to Newcastle residents. And at the time, he said that we had a rose-tinted view of municipal transport that was out of date and not sustainable with the current climate. But as councillor Forbes points out, this isn't a rose-tinted past view, this is the reality now in 2019 in the capital of our country. If we had comparable powers to the ones which London had, if we had retained the powers that they were never forced to give up, then we would be enormously further ahead. Bus deregulation has been an absolute disaster. And while he's, he's right to point out that we do not have the powers that we would wish to with buses and the North of Tyne Combined Authority, that's in part because the footprint doesn't match that of the local transport area. But we, what we really need is a much broader response, right, a much broader and deeper response, which is not limited to that, of devolution. To roll back the significant problems caused by deregulation is not something that can be done by local authorities or combined authorities on their own. And it's just really important to look at what we've lost, because it's not just a problem of fares, it's a problem of routes. If you look at the, the broad expanse of the city, particularly its rural fringes, bus connections have got substantially worse since deregulation. A lot of the really vital bus services that connected the smaller villages around, around the edge of the city have been lost. A lot of the sorts of services that were relied on by people to get into work and to get into public, into cities were lost. A lot of the joined-up thinking that used to happen around public transport was lost. For example, under the good old days of Tyne and Wear County Council, very few buses ever ran across the Tyne bridges, because buses ran to the nearest metro point and people were then able to transfer. One of the big problems of bus deregulation, one of the things we were seeking to at least partially address through Quality Contracts, was how difficult it is to transfer from one form of transport to another, what's called multimodal transport. It's ridiculous how expensive and difficult it is in our city compared to what was once the envy of Europe under our previous beautifully integrated public transport system in Tyne and Wear. Therefore, I think it's incredibly important to recognise the importance of bus deregulation in this motion, and I strongly support the amendment.
Councillor Fairley, followed by councillor Higgins.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I too would like to talk about transport, because an effective transport system is vital for our wellbeing and continued prosperity. The disparity in transport spending between the North East and London is nothing short of a national scandal. Here in Newcastle, though, we have ambition and a desire to do something to address this inequality, but our only obstacle is with national government. Through the North of Tyne Combined Authority, plans are at advanced stage, hopefully, for the reopening of the South East Northumberland Ashington Bligh and Tyne rail line. This has been talked about for, for many years, if not decades, but it's only now, following the establishment of the combined authority, that it could actually become a reality. It's just, you know, we're still waiting, though, for central government. And there are other rail schemes locally that could benefit the city, such as the opening of the Leam side line through County Durham, which could open up new journey opportunities, but also free up capacity and extra train paths for more services on the East Coast Mainline south of Newcastle. And of course, there are plans out there, if we could get the backing for it, for extensions to the metro system. And rail reopening really works. Out in my ward, my nearest railway station, Mainline Rail, is actually not in Newcastle, it's across the river in Blayden, which until a few years ago had a terrible train service, about two or maybe three trains per day. But in 2015, Gateshead Council, working with Northern Rail, worked to increase the frequency up to a two-hourly service, and people started using it. It's actually quite popular now, to the point where, as of last month and the new timetable introduction, they've now got a train at least once per hour from very early in the morning till late at night, at least one train per hour, and at the peak times, there's about a train every 20 minutes at the morning and evening peak times. So to paraphrase the old film tagline, build it and they will come. So here we are, opening up new journey opportunities, creating opportunities for people, unemployment, leisure, social opportunities, but we just need the government to take us seriously. Newcastle's a proud city, we've got a record of innovation and a reputation for driving the agenda that others follow. We've already mentioned the, the bus deregulation and our attempts at a, at a Quality Contract Scheme, so it's, it's interesting that this week has seen an announcement by Greater Manchester Combined Authority and Andy Burnham to, to press for a similar scheme in, in Greater Manchester. And hopefully, the national political climate has changed sufficiently that, that they will be successful in this, and we wish them the best of luck, so much so that, you know, we would like to be pursuing our ambitions of having a similar scheme ourselves through the, through the, the North of Tyne Combined Authority and the extra powers that it gives us. So we're watching Manchester closely here, but all again, the book stops with central government, we need action from them. So please support the amended motion.
Councillor McCarthy, you reserve the right to speak.
I won't repeat some of the comments made by my colleagues. And, Lord Mayor, I think as councillor, we ought to welcome the campaign that's been generated not just by setting up the northern powerhouse five years ago, but the campaign that's being supported by the press in our region and across the north of, of England, which I think is really important to raise awareness about the challenges that we face. And just to repeat, it is five years since the term 'northern powerhouse' was used to describe devolution, so I'm really pleased that we've got a North of Tyne devolution deal now. And that has to be set in the context of 3.6 billion cut in public spending in the North, whereas the South East and South West has had a 4.7 billion increase in their public spending. Clearly, we're being massively left behind. And I think my colleagues have talked significantly about transport, Lord Mayor, but it's not just in transport that we're left behind. We've been left behind in education investment, in opportunities for jobs, our unemployment rate is so much higher than it is elsewhere, and clearly we've got a real challenge to address this. The investment in rail, which is currently underway by the government, for instance, in the East Coast Mainline, the investment is currently going into East Coast Mainline, but they're starting in London, and I think we would want it to start in, in Vanessa or Aberdeen rather than in London, and actually spread down from the North rather than up from the South. Everything seems to happen in the South East. And of course, we will end up with reconditioned Pacer trains for many years to come, because that's what we will end up with in the North. I think that is outrageous. And, Lord Mayor, then, when we have the opportunity to seek funding for infrastructure investment like transforming cities funds, we've got to put together a bid, and we're in competition with other cities elsewhere who aren't part of combined authorities that cover sort of transport areas. Colleagues have mentioned the Shared Prosperity Fund, so, you know, we would like that Shared Prosperity Fund to come via combined authorities, because I think we in this city know what we think we need, rather than those who are in Westminster. And I think I mentioned earlier in, in the education report about the importance of investing in employability and skills, you know, that is why our devolution deal is so important. We also need to invest in housing. We're very clear in this amendment tonight that we want to be able to build more social homes, more affordable homes. And, Lord Mayor, based on the conversation we've had earlier, they need to be sustainable and ready to deal with climate change, which I think will be a challenge, because that will make it more costly. Lord Mayor, I think we welcome the opposition bringing forward this motion tonight. I hope they see the amendment as a friendly amendment and are happy to accept it, and I'm delighted to be able to second it. Thank you.
I'll call on councillor Stone then to reply.
Colleagues who spoke in the debate, I'm happy to assert that the original motion certainly did mention rail connectivity, and I'm sure this is a member of Transport for North, councillor Forbes will be aware that Northern Partnership Rail is certainly all about cross-north rail connectivity. I'm sure he'd also have noted that the intention was to endorse the Power of the North campaign as published by the news, regional newspapers, and so I've used their key points as the first part of the motion, and I think it's therefore a little bit disingenuous of him to complain about omissions, perhaps he should take it with them. As he raises the issue of bus re-regulation, I welcome his comments. He rightly notes that I was very critical of Quality Contract schemes, and as it turns out, so was the Transport Commissioner, who sat in judgment upon it. It was a flawed prospectus, a bit like Procytopheus was. Several years and several millions of pounds of transport funding were wasted, so it was quite right that the opposition parties on the ITA scrutinised it and declined to support it. It's a backward step of the current devolution arrangements that the opposition parties are not given a seat at the table to talk about and oath questions and challenge the, the, the decision-makers on, on transport priorities and transport spending, and I think that's something that, I think, could easily be strengthened going forward. We look forward, therefore, to scrutinising any emerging proposals on major regulation ideas and resolve judgement on their viability, reserve judgement on their viability, just as we wait to see whether Andy Burnham's plans for Greater Manchester will face a judicial review or not. We wait to see whether councillor Forbes's words on bus re-regulation are matched by announcements of additional powers and substantive proposals, hopefully in the not-too-distant future. In the meantime, though, we will, will accept the amendments. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Stone, can I be clear that you accepted the amendment?
I'm completely agree with you.
Okay. Okay, councillor Stone has accepted the amendment to the motion, so the amended motion now becomes the substantive motion, so is it agreed? Agreed, thank you. If we can then move on to item 13. Jenny's looking relieved. The adoption of a definition of Islamophobia, I'll call on councillor Shatwell to move this motion, which will be seconded by councillor Shumel Rahman. Councillor Shatwell?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And an especially warm welcome to everyone in the public gallery tonight. It's so important that we're witnessing this debate together. This motion couldn't have happened without your activism, your research and your commitment to tackling Islamophobia, so thank you. This motion is a response to the vital work of the All-Party Parliamentary Group on British Muslims, who led an inquiry into the working definition of Islamophobia at the end of last year. The resulting report concludes that Islamophobia is now so prevalent in society and dispersed across institutional, social, political and economic life that it deserves to be recognised as Britain's bigotry blind spot. So Islamophobia was first defined in 1997 by the Runnymede Trust. Over 20 years on, we can no longer ignore or deny the impact of this on our Muslim communities. The effects of Islamophobia are real, measurable and on the increase. A definition is important to creating a wider understanding and a challenge to Islamophobia. It's not a mere intellectual exercise, but part of tackling the very real issues of discrimination, exclusion and hate. The APPG definition clarifies that Islamophobia is a form of racism and indicates that Islamophobia can also affect people who are mistaken for being Muslim. This reflects recent Newcastle University research that shows Islamophobia can affect Sikhs, Hindus, South Asian, Black African and Caribbean people and Roma. Islamophobia also affects asylum seekers, refugees and central and eastern European migrants. So it's crucial to recognise that it's not just Muslims who are impacted by Islamophobia. British society at large suffers, and it's divided due to the dangerous normalisation of prejudice. An attack on one religious group or community is an attack on the values we all share as a society. as a society. Since 9/11, the British media's coverage on Islam and Muslim communities has been inextricably linked with themes of conflict, violence, and terrorism, whereas stories about attacks on Muslims have decreased during the same time period. These harmful myths are now believed by a significant section of the population. Forty-six percent of British people in a recent YouGov poll thought that there was a fundamental clash between Islam and the values of British society. These myths are disgracefully perpetuated by the Tory government, who've refused to accept the APPG definition, amidst allegations of Islamophobia in their own party. A poll of Tory party members published just this week revealed the extent of their belief in such falsehoods, with 67% believing that parts of Britain operate under Sharia law, and 40% believing the government should lower the number of Muslims entering Britain. It is truly horrifying to think that next month we may have a new Prime Minister voted on by 0.3% of the population, who said that it was ridiculous that Muslim women chose to wear the niqab and that they looked like letterboxes and bank robbers. Dangerously, such comments pander to the far right and legitimize and embolden growing racist rhetoric. We also can't overlook that austerity further precipitates the conditions for racism to grow and thrive, and for the fake populace of the far right to fill that vacuum, dividing our communities, spreading fear, and picking on minority groups to manufacture a new enemy within. Far-right groups in particular are using online spaces for Islamophobic hate speech, resulting in victims experiencing anxiety, depression, and feelings of isolation. This definition is one step towards ensuring that another 20 years doesn't go by without substantive progress on Islamophobia. We can no longer ignore the rise of Islamophobia in the UK. More than half of all religiously motivated attacks in 2017 to 18 were directed at Muslims. Reports also indicate that Muslim women are the main victims. However, Islamophobia encompasses far more than hate crimes. Islamophobia is structural and cultural racism. It includes systematic discrimination against Muslims across employment, education, politics, health, welfare, housing, the criminal justice system, illustrated in the Lammy Report, and other areas of public life. Islamophobia operates through negative government and political policies that stigmatize Muslims, such as counter-terrorism strategies, and through institutional decision-making processes that operate to exclude Muslims. Islamophobia silences, excludes, and harms. It denies people a sense of respect and dignity, which should be a basic human right for everyone. So I hope the council will support this motion. Thank you.
Councillor Rahman.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's a privilege my maiden speech to councillors on this motion. And I want to thank the people who have attended in the gallery. We really appreciate that. I feel it's extremely important I speak on this issue, not only as a Muslim councillor, not only as a strong anti-racism campaigner, but as a member of this community and on a human level, to try and attempt to demonstrate the negative effects of Islamophobia. Islamophobia indirectly affects all in the community. By allowing hatred and discrimination to breed, it increases intolerance in our community, in our society. Islamophobia can be extremely debilitating to people. I do not believe there's a Muslim person in this city that hasn't been affected by Islamophobia, whether that's through the media and press, through social media, through family and friends, or direct lived experiences. My own family have experienced the hatred in Newcastle City Centre. We hear the experiences of friends and people who have travelled on public transport, in shops, in public spaces, who have suffered Islamophobia, with the majority being women wearing the hijab, the headscarf, and the niqab, the face veil. After the Brexit referendum, we witnessed a nearly immediate rise in Islamophobia, hearing firsthand accounts of people being told to go home, or I voted leave, why are you still here? To the National Front, who have not been seen in Newcastle for years, and other fascist groups mobilizing the next day at the monument, unfilling the banners and spreading their hate. We've seen the steady rise of Islamophobia since then, culminating on repeated attacks on our local Islamic institutions. Bar Academy has been mentioned and has been repeatedly attacked with Islamophobic and antisemitic graffiti. The principal of Bar Academy is actually a friend of mine, and it's hard to describe the effect of those attacks have had on the staff and the students there. What is heartwarming, however, is the response from the community and faith groups and community groups who've really supported Bar Academy. And that response has been fantastic. We've also seen Hate a Muslim Day, but that's been countered with Love a Muslim Day. We've seen increased Islamophobic graffiti across the city. We've seen increased far-right mobilizations in the city, with fascist marches and protests at the monument, effectively turning the city centre into a no-go zone for Muslims. I personally wouldn't allow my family to go there without me on those days, for the fear of intimidation, hatred, racism that they would encounter and experience and have experienced. Like many in the public gallery, we must resist, fight, and never give up against racism in all its forms. It's abhorrent. It's a stain on our beautiful city. By defining Islamophobia, something this government has not done, we will help to fight against Islamophobia and hopefully build a better city to live in. I urge my colleagues to pass this motion and to also speak to the Muslim people who have turned up today to show support, who are in attendance in the gallery and have lived those experiences. Thank you very much. I second this motion.
I think councillor's just congratulated you on your maiden speech, you man. Councillor Cot, followed by councillor Avery.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. And it's my pleasure to speak on this motion, because indeed, we will be united in this chamber tonight in our view of adopting the definition. I think it's really important that we do so. It's something, of course, that our parties nationally have been working on in the All-Party Group that councillor Shatwell mentioned. And it's really important, because we face a situation in society generally where minorities are being targeted more and more. And here we have a minority group in our society that play a full part in our society, who are suffering. They are suffering from these awful stereotypes, the use of various tropes. We see it in public life, as has been alluded to, so disgracefully to think that a future Prime Minister of this country will use language which might have been associated with the language of yesteryear in describing minority communities. So I think it's really important that we make a stand, that we show in this chamber that we are united against Islamophobia, and that we work in this city to ensure that Islamophobia is tackled wherever we find it, and that we take a stand as a council to work against it. I think it's very unclear to me what the arguments, the possible arguments could be against this, but we know that there are those that say that it precludes criticism of Islam or Islamic ideology. And I don't think that's the case at all. There are two different things. I think it's really baffling to think that the government feels it needs to have its own definition. What could be better than a cross-party definition, which has been agreed through committees, through discussion, through interaction with various concerned people from the Islamic, yes, from the Muslim community and from other sections of society. So I think that's really important. And I think it's also important to realize that in terms of this particular agenda, one of the criticisms of this motion and adopting this definition is that it sits against the Equalities Act of 2010, because that focuses on racism. Well, this is a form of racism, but it's much more than that. And I think both other councillors have mentioned this. I think that Islamophobia really is not just a racist issue, it's a social and cultural construct. It is part of that attack on minorities, and we need to make people aware of that. So I think in the interests of a civilized society, a tolerant society, a society in which we respect people and respect their culture and their identity, and stand firm against attacks on minorities, we really need to sign up to this definition. And I do thank councillor Shatwell for bringing this motion to council, and we'll certainly be supporting it from the opposition side. So thank you very much.
Councillor Avery, followed by councillor Ave.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Like councillor Cot, I want to talk a little bit about some of the objections to the definition of Islamophobia. And some of what I'm going to say in this speech, you might have been able to hear when we discussed the definition of antisemitism, because a lot of the objections were similar. Sadly, I wasn't able to give that speech because of some anti-democratic protesters, but fortunately, I'm able to do that today. And the reason why I oppose Islamophobia is precisely because I oppose antisemitism. And as someone who's been a victim of antisemitism, I oppose that racism happening to anyone else. Ironically, I've also been a victim of Islamophobia, actually twice in this city, because not only does it affect Sikhs and lots of other people, it also is something that happens to Jews, even white Jews like myself, because unfortunately, Islamophobes are not always the most perceptive or sensible of people. But to return to what I said I was going to talk about, which is the objection. So the principal objection is to say, and this comes from some organizations that I generally really respect, like the British Humanist Organization and the National Secular Society, is to say that this will prevent reasonable discussion of social problems. So in exactly the same way that our definition of antisemitism does not and did not prevent us from saying, for example, that the policies applied by the current Israeli government are racist, all that, there are problems in particular parts of the Jewish community with illegal schools and the way that boys and girls are segregated, that is not antisemitic to say. And our definition of that antisemitism did not and does not prevent you from saying it. Similarly, our adoption of this definition of Islamophobia does not prevent us from discussing issues, for example, relating to homosexuality. It does not prevent us from discussing issues related to honour-based violence. It does not prevent us from discussing the problems that might be faced by people who have grown up within one religious community and choose to leave that religion or to become a member of no religion. It in no way prevents us from having a reasonable discussion about issues that affect us as a society. What it does prevent is attempts, which are not made in good faith, to attack, to belittle, to stigmatize people. We can and will continue to have robust protections from free speech, and those are laid out very strongly in statute. As a council, we cannot prevent people from engaging in free speech. What we can and should do is prevent people from engaging in hate speech. What we can and should do is prevent people from attempting to single out, to belittle, to stigmatize minorities. It does not prevent us from having a discussion, for example, about women's equality. What it does do is prevent people from attacking and belittling people who choose to express their rights as women, stress in a certain way, because those people are Muslims. But what it does do is strengthen protection for everyone in our city. And it's incredibly important that we do that. And it's incredibly important that we all, Muslim and non-Muslim, Jew and non-Jew, go out and address these myths that have been allowed to spread, to say that we are not abolishing free speech in this city, that we are not throwing gay people under the bus, that we are not throwing women under the bus, that we will continue to look after these groups of people, but that we will do so in a way that also respects Islam, that also respects Muslims, that also respects all of our communities. And it's only by protecting all of us that we are able to have rights for any of us. If we allow Muslim people to be driven out of our society, if we allow the sorts of attacks that are leveled against them to stand, then eventually that will apply to all of us. I've always said that if you scratch an Islamophobe, you find an antisemite underneath. Unfortunately, you also usually find a sexist, a racist, and a homophobe. If we allow the bigotry that drives Islamophobia to stand unchecked in our city, it will eventually destroy the foundation on which we would otherwise hope to build. I strongly support this motion and hope you will do too.
Councillor Ave, followed by councillor Storey. She's not here.
I would like to thank councillor Shatwell for bringing this motion to the chamber. As a Muslim living in this great city, my personal experience has been very positive. I came to Newcastle in early 2000s, at a time that many Muslims were facing hatred and prejudice. I went to a Catholic school in Longbenton, St Mary's. I'm very glad to say, all I felt was desire from everyone for me to do better in life and excel in academia. I hope that this motion helps all Muslims in this city to have as positive experience as I've had. It is very heartening, at a time when Islamophobia is on the rise and writing propaganda is entering politics, councillor Shatwell has put this motion forward. It is another example of the acceptance and welcoming nature of Geordies toward members of different minority groups. As Liberal Democrats, we condemn all forms of racism and hatred, including Islamophobia. We would like to see a city in which all its members are treated equally, regardless of their ethnic or religious background. I believe that Newcastle is a great example for other cities as a beacon of tolerance, unity, and hope. Thank you very much.
And can I now congratulate you on your maiden speech? Councillor Schofield.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I support this motion and the principle of anti-racism behind it. I'd like to add my concerns about the record number of anti-Muslim attacks, vandalism, and incidents of abuse reported last year with women bearing the brunt, particularly those who wear veils. Six out of 10 women, six out of 10 face-to-face attacks target women, and they are mainly, as it is said, disillusioned young men venting their fury on Muslim women. But as the watchdog Tel Mama records, which records hate crimes, says, while there have been many recorded incidents against women wearing headscarves over recent years, there is undoubtedly a direct link on the rise of Islamic attacks on Muslim women who wear the niqab since Boris Johnson, possibly our next Prime Minister, yay, compared women in veils to letterboxes. Tel Mama also reports the worrying fact that women who wear the veil are known to rarely report anti-Muslim hate against them. Sometimes it's out of fear, but often it's because they are targeted so often, they become desensitized to it and prefer to take avoiding action in the face of such attacks. Tel Mama and other similar groups challenge the right of free speech of Johnson and others that is casually and intentionally offensive, both the effect on veiled Muslim women and the fear it engenders on them, but also on the visibly Muslim women as a whole. For this reason, I want to take the opportunity, and it's great to have so many in the gallery, I want to take this opportunity to celebrate and thank the group of Muslim sisters in Newcastle, who very bravely demonstrated their right to wear a veil last year by travelling together on the Newcastle Metro. They did a great deal to raise awareness of the issue and to challenge the attempts to take away their rights by those wishing to provoke fear and anxiety and hate inspired by Islamophobia.
to reinforce that the biggest danger to Jewish and Muslim communities has been the rise of the far right, who are focused on silencing and demonising everybody, and that Islamophobia is making antisemitism more acceptable, because if you let one racism through, the others will grow. And of course, it's the Tories that are fanning the flame of all these forms of racism through the production of their hostile environment, so thanks for that, Oscar. I mean, both Anne and Shemel talked really, really powerfully about the effects of Islamophobia on our communities in Newcastle, many of which are in the gallery upstairs, and that's the main message that we really need to get across tonight, of the direct lived experience and how we offer solidarity and support. And the solidarity that was shown following the attacks on the Bar Academy, by having a human chain outside the building, and by Bar Academy opening the building up for educational initiatives through iftars and through solidarity with Sri Lanka, was really, really powerful. And unlike Anne, myself and several other women participated in the reclaim the Metro event with our Muslim sisters upstairs. I suppose, in terms of the reclaim, the Metro event, I suppose we do need to mention the work that is still ongoing and the importance of hearing the voices upstairs, and as I understand it, that there's now an urgency to look at addressing the issue of hate crime in supermarkets in Asda, particularly one that begins with A, which I won't mention. So that may be the next campaign that we all need to get behind. So there's still much more work that needs to be done. We need to continue to report and monitor hate crime in Newcastle through the new reporting mechanism. I also think we need to do more work to our equality objectives, to look at the impact of Islamophobia particularly on women, employment and economic participation in our city. I think it's also important that other agencies in the region look at adopting this definition, and I hope it's something that the new Police and Crime Commissioner can work on too. At the national level, the government's prevention strategies to be independently reviewed to address concerns over its impact on communities, so that's forthcoming. And there's a further Home Affairs Select Committee on Islamophobia. I don't know how many select committees and reports we need to talk about the rise of Islamophobia, but this select committee is currently receiving oral admitted evidence, so we'll await this report as well. So really, I really hope this motion and acceptance of the definition is really just one part of much wider work that us as a council and all of the agencies that we work with, and work in collaboration with our communities, can continue to work on. So I'd just like to thank everybody again, especially those in the public gallery, and I think we're going to try and meet downstairs by the back door afterwards, so we can all talk to each other. Thank you.
Well, I do detect a degree of unanimity about this motion, but we do actually need to familiarise ourselves with the use of the voting system. Yes. So I would ask you please to log into your systems, confess that I've forgotten mine anyway. Does this show on the screen, please? Oh dear. Sorry, what was that, Stevie? So is there anyone from IT here apart from Jenny? Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm glad I didn't try this on the last motion. just a screen show that's a bit amiss. So I would ask you please if you would record your votes, and it will be followed up afterwards. Is there anybody who's yet to vote? Two at the back, one at the front on the left. Yeah, would you say, do you want to make a statement? Yes. No, I haven't, oh. I did it last month. What seat's Greg, Greg? Forty-three. Forty-three. Is everybody okay on this side? Yeah? Okay, well, I'm going to declare that vote unanimously carried. We've seen some issues arise there, and I'm sure that the people involved will think about it and sort it out before the next meeting. In the meantime, we don't meet again for a while, so may I wish people a happy summer. It remains to be seen whether the England cricket team will make progress in the World Cup. I'm sure that the women's football team appear to have a better chance. You will find at the back a plastic box I've left there, which I've seeded with all the change I had in my pocket, you might like to empty your pockets towards my charities on the way out, Diabetes UK and Friends of Wal bottle Campus. So on that note, I'll close the meeting with a reminder, the next meeting is on the 4th of September. Thank you, colleagues.